Okay, it's seven nineteen, I'll reopen the council meeting. To item number ten, which is action call in the session, to the Texas Department of Commerce, one dot oh seven two, the election on real property, purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property for Christmas golf course. Do we have any, a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that, to, for the council to direct the city manager to continue to look into the new possibility of a different avenue of purchase for the golf course.
Doug's second.
Doug's second.
By master?
No.
Love?
Yes.
Bill?
No.
Bishop?
No.
Kent?
No.
Malone?
Yes.
Okay, it failed Malone and Love voting for, so that's the end of this session. And so at that, I will adjourn the city council meeting at seven twenty P M. Alright, so we're going to open the special meeting from the city council for a city council workshop.
Not me. I'm gonna attend this workshop, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else, anybody else there? Alright, so we'll discuss calmly, there's no participation from the audience, as called on by the council. First item on the agenda is internal controls and cash handling policy. You all have received the stating, internal control and cash handling policy. So I have any further discussion? Carrie is here tonight, can she have any questions for our comments?
Okay, so, I've read through this internal control policy that was included with our staff. There's nothing that specifically addresses the purchase of cashier's checks, which probably needs to be in there somewhere, about what our policy is in force today is. And it hasn't been updated since two thousand and twelve, which we probably need to do an update, because things do change, and I can't imagine that over the last seven years, that we haven't had positive stuff change either.
Any specifics other than the cashier check?
Um, no, I mean, it looks pretty good, except that, like I said, it doesn't address cashier's checks. And there may be other things that, you know, on a day-to-day basis, that, you know, Carrie would probably know better than, than me, exactly what comes up on a day-to-day basis during the, the course of the business day, that may not be being addressed in there, I'm not sure.
Would you like to speak on that, or would you?
Um, I mean, I agree, there probably are a few things that could be looked at in here. This isn't something that we have ever done annually, like the investment policy, but, I mean, we can definitely always look at it.
But I would like to see like a section added for cashier checks, and, you know, if there's anything else that come, that she knows of, that, you know, we deal with, that isn't as specifically addressed in there, then we should, we should probably add that as well.
Well, I think the one offs and the ad hocks, you know, the occasional out-of-the-norm issues, like the cashier's check that happened. If we put a policy in place that said, you know, when something like that happened, I understand it was at the closing of a real estate at the title office, you don't want everyone to redraft all the documents. It could easily be that, you know, the, the person that drafted it, drafted the check, comes back into the office, documents it with another person, has another person sign off, so there's two signatures written on it, saying this is what I did, this is what happened, this is why it happened, both people sign off, and put it in the document.
I actually think that to solve the cashier's check problem, is issue a city check for cashier's check.
But you can't do that at closing, at the title.
Yes, you can, because the title company was one who told us how much to get the cashier's check for, so we could have cut the check.
Right, this wasn't a last minute thing. There were two checks issued, one several weeks before the closing.
No, that's not true. There was a check issued, and then she gave us the wrong figure, so there was a follow-up check. They were several weeks apart, but the first one was for the closing.
No, I, no, you misunderstood. I wasn't saying it wasn't for the closing, I was saying that it wasn't done at the closing in a time crunch.
Now, the second one was in the time crunch, because she needed to correct her votes. But I think we could solve this whole issue by issuing a city check for cashier's, or cashier's checks in the future.
And that was my concern, is we, our policy didn't have anything that told us what we should do. So we were kind of flying by the seat of our pants, trying to figure out how, how to get this done, when if we had had a policy that addressed cashier's checks, we would have been, okay, we need to do this, we need to issue a check to save interest, to get to the bank, get a cashier's check.
And, and what I'm saying, Mary, is if Carrie were out of the office that day, could not issue the check, and you had to have that check, and you had to go to the bank and draft it, I think it would be appropriate to, once you get back to the office, document what happened, and have yourself and one other person acknowledge what happened, and sign off on it.
Well, and that's-
Their check couldn't be issued at that time because of certain circumstances, and just so that other people are aware, it's documented, that's it. I think that would be fine.
Right, your whole is gonna have emergency situations that don't fall into the law, and when that happens, then, like you say, you document it to the best that you can, and no more.
Right, get a couple of signatures on it, and that's it.
You're open?
Yeah.
And we can add whatever makes sense. Carrie actually does issue the check, too, if she wants to.
Whoever, whoever actually does it.
So you-
Would you like to know?
Sure. The way we do it is, of course, we purchase something, we partner ahead to get the invoices to sign off on, put on the invoices what account they're charged to within their budget, they're giving to me, I look at them to make sure they're proper purchases, I okay them, we give them to Robin, who-
Cuts the checks.
Cuts the checks, and then the checks come to our office, Sandy and I sign them unless they're over five thousand, and the mayor and Sandy sign them, and sometimes they get stuck together, right, we miss signing one every once in a while. I think it was five last year, we did a fairly accurate count, but, and then, before they're mailed out, Dee Dee goes to them individually, and packs them apart, sticks them in envelopes, and they-
But if any one of those people in that process would have been gone on the day that she had to have that check, an ad hoc add-on would be just to simply document it, sign it, and say this is what happened.
Basically, that's what exactly happened.
Right, that's all I'm saying.
I mean, that day, she said, we've gotta have a cashier check, I said, you want me to go to the bank with you? No, I had it.
Right.
But, I mean, there were four of us that knew what was going on.
Right.
It's not that big a deal, I think.
But it is a big deal, it, it is a big deal, because it was legal, I mean, it was basically, everything, nothing was illegal about it, but it looked really bad when you looked at it, and it could have been, because only one person went over there and got that money out. What if that was the wrong person that went over there and got that city money out, and no one sent it?
Okay, so this is what happened, she called them and told them how much to make the check out for, I went and signed the draft, I didn't give them any instructions.
But it was, but it still comes down to it, it doesn't matter if you went over there or got it, I mean, but you were the only one that signed that, there was only one signature on there. Yes, maybe she did call, okay, I, I say she called, okay, but still, what if the wrong person went over there? Because it's not always-
Well, at this point, it's kind of mute, because there wasn't a policy for it anyway, so that's why we're here tonight, is we're making a policy to make sure that you issue a check, that way it goes through all the, the double checking and everything like that, and we'll just take the check to the bank, and then they can issue the cashier's check for it. So why don't you tweak your policy? And then submit it back to them, to see. Okay, any other questions on that ticket or item? Then we'll move on to procedures and laws regarding renovations. Yes, ma'am.
So, in regard procurement laws in state Texas, typically, within certain parameters, you don't have to go out for bids, but there are certain times when you do have to go out for competitive sealed bid contracts, and those are expenditures of fifty thousand dollars or more. And in that instance, it's whether or not that money's been budgeted. So when I talk to you all, just a little bit about one of the reasons we have the budget is that we, how, this is how much money we have, this is how it's gonna be spent, but when it comes time to actually spend that money, we still have to work within the state law parameters. There are just kind of some broad and general outlines, and terms of procurement, those are set out by, by T M L. As with everything, there's kind of the, the right line rule, this is it, this is how we do it, this is what the expectation is, but there are always, even with competitive sealed bids, or competitive sealed proposals, there are always some things that don't have to be done that way. So I just, I have to say to you all, while we kind of are talking in generalities, there are certain exceptions. When we talk about procurement fifty thousand dollars or more, for one or more municipal funds, comply with statutory procedures, you can use the reverse auction procedure for purchasing, or comply with other prescribed methods of construction procurement, and some of those are like, where you have the architect do your plan, and you do the building design and all that. So, there are kind of all of these layers of things, with the exception of really huge projects, like the community center, or something like that, then typically, we're within the application of municipal procurement laws. Typically, that means going out for sealed bids or sealed proposals, based on the specifications that is set by the city, and then those are advertised, and there's a lot of this that I don't know, that in a world that is powerful, city to city, where it's published, the number of days it's published, or whatever it is, just simply because I'm not ever involved in it until the bids are open, they're brought to the council, and the council makes, makes those decisions. But I know that there are policies within the city, you know, that's the way we've always done it, kind of thing, and, and I, I can't, I can't speak to those, and I don't wanna act like I can. If it is below the fifty thousand dollar threshold that require, that does not require bidding, and then, later we think we're gonna go over fifty thousand, then sometimes we need to just step back, see where we are in that process, see how much more it's gonna be, step back into the process. There, there's kind of two schools of thought in it, the problem in Texas is we have so many courts that make decisions, where we are in our judicial district, well, there's also a judicial district in Houston, there's one in Austin, there's one in San Antonio, there's one in East Texas, and so we sometimes have competing appellate court decisions that are good law, they're just not absolutely managed, and that's because you have people making decisions based on different fact situations. So when I say to you that there's competing information out of the courts about what you do in that situation, some folks say, it depends on how much, some folks say, back out and start over, so I don't really wanna say, you know, this is how you have to do it, because it's been construed different ways. There are also provisions made for certain types of purchasing and procurement to be done through a co-op, I don't even know what that's called, where the state says, you know, we buy toilet paper so much cheaper, and if y'all buy it from us, kind of thing, and we don't have to go out for bids.
Oh, Buy Board.
Oh, Buy Board, okay. And, and, and that, there is provision for that, what everybody's trying to do is make the best use of public funds, and sometimes there are other provisions.
Does that only pay thirty thousand? Does it, does it cost to be in the Buy Board?
I don't know.
You pay a fee. Carrie, does it cost?
You pay a fee?
I thought it was, we did that on here?
Um, I couldn't say, I don't remember specifically.
Whether it's H D A C or Buy Board, you pay a seven hundred, eight hundred dollar fee, depending on the purchases, depends on how much you pay for that purchase, for using Buy Board or H D A C.
Okay, so there, there's provision made for those type of cooperative things, where you don't have to go out for competitive bids, there are certain things that you don't have to go out for bids for certain, certain types of professional services and that kind of thing. There are provisions made for the construction and repair of structures and roads, there are provisions made for the purchase of machinery and those kind of things. In, in regard to the bids, one of the things that is kind of hard, I think, in small communities is, we don't always go with a low bid, and I think that happened the last time we were, we were here, so it's kind of point of reference for you all. Typically, we wanna spend the less, the less money that we can on any type of project, but it doesn't always mean it's a good fit. If you have somebody with a low miles, who can do it for a little bit more, but of course learns to come from Houston for less, then a lot of times, that decision is made just based on proximity, prior relationships, prior work done on behalf of the city. I would less also tell you all that I've now been here long enough to know, that there are certain times we've taken a low bid, and it's turned out not to be the best fit for the city. So, again, that's, that's a time when you all are using your knowledge and experience and background, and that of the city staff, to say, maybe that won't be the best fit for us. We don't have to accept any bid. If, if you don't feel like someone's up to the task, or the bids are just too high, and you reject all bids, then at that point, you're backing out, starting over, and seeking to procure more bids, maybe with further, with further information. So, that's just kind of a general overview of how things work, in terms of, like I say, the, the internal logistics, what decision for specifications made, and that kind of thing, I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any insight into that.
But at the very beginning, you said it had to be budgeted.
No, it don't, but, no, what I'm saying to you is there, we do have the budget, but sometimes we are not, it's not automatic, well, we budget it to pay salaries, because y'all, every time y'all meet, you're not approving the payment of checks, that money is there, but then if we meet the bidding requirements, even if it's budgeted, we probably have to go through those steps. And so a lot of times, when I talk about something that's budgeted, what I mean, and you correct me if I'm wrong, because this is my thing, it means me, y'all aren't having to approve every payment, because you already set that money aside for payment of the utilities at, at the finance office, or paying insurance premiums, or workers' comp, or whatever.
I love that, Carrie.
So that, that's, that's the difference I'm trying to make, is, is once the money is out there, you might still have to go through the bidding process.
Some cities have put some of that stuff on their website, like, say, to say the curb thing, they put out that we need a, that they're in need of a, a curb of so much, and they put it out there, and then they let who, I mean, then they find the one, instead of just automatically giving it to someone, they, they put it out, they put everything they need out there, such as the work-
Oh, even, even if it does need minimum requirements?
Right, they just have a list-
I got you.
That said, and then they have the ones, and then-
Let me, let me tell you a little problem in every city, for instance, if we need plumbing work, major mining, whatever, when you're plumbing work, well, our sewer and water pump, I'm not plumbers, the sewer and water pump, they're not licensed plumbers. So when we go out to find a plumber, we try to call local, they won't show up. We use a plumber, I hate to say this, from Mel Komen, because he shows up every time we call him. The local plumbers don't show up, so we know who we can call that will show up and do what we wanna do. Like, the, the concrete guy that we use, like, he shows up every time, we like to wait on him, he doesn't put us on a long list or anything like that, and we know that what he does is reasonably priced, and we use judgment, that's based on the fact that what he's doing is gonna be less than the required bidding amount. You just have to use good judgment when you're doing it.
But all that can be brought, I mean, when it gets brought, the bids get brought to the council, we don't have to take the lowest bid, I mean, we can consider whether or not they're lawful, whether or not they show up, whether or not they are reliable, how good of a work they do, or whatever, pick the one that we feel is the best for the job.
And, and y'all did that at the last council meeting?
Right.
So, you, you do, you do have some leeway in, in those situations.
But if it's pieced out, if it's pieced out, does it still have to mean, I mean, it does, if it's only done a little bit at a time, say those curb works, I mean, is that something that we can do that legally? Can it legally be done each time like that, or is it just a-
Okay, that, that is not the best practice. There, there is legislation that talks about breaking down a project.
So would you not think that would be a good thing, that, on something like that, that you need to-
Well, but sometimes there, but sometimes, again, it really depends on exactly every type of situation, because there are times when you don't necessarily know that you're gonna need fifty feet of gutter, you may think you need ten feet of gutter, but then something happens, and it turns out you need fifty feet of gutter. There are also, there's also provision made for, if you're hiring somebody for the day to complete a certain type of work, but again, that's one of those things that's kind of in limbo in, in regard to the courts, there are some places that say, that's fine, you can do it, and then there are some courts that say, we don't think you should be doing it that way. So, it may not be the best practice, but there may be times when it, it breaks down that way, that that's how you end up having to do it, because you didn't realize you needed to complete a hundred yards or whatever. So it's really kind of a case-by-case basis. I, I'm, I'm not saying that your best practice would be not piecing it, but I can see situations where you might do it.
Well, I just think, if you have a three to six month period, and you paid out sixty something thousand dollars, I think that was, then you look at a pro, I mean, that seems like a ongoing thing, that you probably need to step back and look and say, wait, we better stop and take a look at it. Because if it's for the same kind of service that's happening, don't you think that that's a repeated-
Well, I, I don't know exactly what the situation is, I'm-
I was gonna say, why don't you just sound exactly what you're talking about?
It is the curb work, it's the curb work.
The curb work where?
Well, I don't know where, all over town, I guess.
I don't, I don't, I don't know where they're talking about.
You talking about the street department, when they do curbs?
No, I'm talking about Mike Brayden, the Brayden contracting, there was, there is, there's been-
When he does the curbs?
Yes, but that's what I'm saying, is there a problem with that? I don't know that that it's not, that, it may be legal to do that, but-
You're talking about, so like, we have to do this street curb work, and then a couple of ones down the road, we gotta do this street's curb work?
Yes.
Well, those aren't always planned, and then it may, I mean, if Donnie goes over to do some street-
That's what I'm saying, is that what they're calling piecing out, that's what I'm asking.
I can't imagine that would be piecing out.
Okay, and, and then-
But it's on curb, but it's, but it's concrete work.
Right, but that doesn't mean it's all part of the same project.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is that, I mean, does that fall in that-
I don't, I don't know, I don't know the specifics of how all of that comes out, or how that works, I'm guessing if we need, you know, all the curbs done around the legend bank, I'm guessing that's gonna be a hundred fifty thousand dollars, but if it's just, we're doing it here and doing it here, because we replaced water lines, or done some sidewalks, I don't know.
That's what I'm asking, is that, is that considered?
I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, because I, I don't know the specifics of that situation, if it's within hours of each other, maybe, if it's days, or weeks, or months, I don't know that how you can always predict that, unless you're just gonna say, we're gonna hire Mike Brayden for a thousand yards of concrete work, whether we use it or not.
That's, that's what I'm asking though, I mean, I, that's why I didn't know if that was something that we need to look in the future of bidding, or something.
Well, I can tell you this, Donnie has said, and he's been there long enough, working with this, Mike Brayden's the only one that will come to the city and do, and build curbs.
Well, I mean, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying-
People that is constantly trying to find somebody to do it.
When I was looking through that, I mean, if anyone looking through that would say the same thing, I mean, to look at those checks, I mean, I'm going, okay, but what's this, is this, should this have been better?
So you're looking at a check and seeing how many times to write a check to somebody, and deciding whether or not you should not spread that out.
In a month, yes. But that's what I'm saying, is that something we need to look at, to see, to make sure that didn't fall under-
Well, I can tell you, pretty much certainty, that most of the work he does on curb work happens, you know, today it'll be on this side of town, it'll be on this side down.
Oh, I know that, he's, I, I realize that, but-
Okay, well, then, that just-
But does that fall, that we, we don't wanna do it illegally, that's what I'm just saying, I don't know that it is, but I'm saying what's-
They're not the same project, they're not the same paving deal, because typically, we're not gonna do curbing unless we're doing paving, and they'll curb it, and they'll pave it, so.
Or the trash truck repair curb jobs.
Do what?
The trash truck repair curb jobs.
Yeah.
We've had several of those that are fifteen, twenty feet long, that-
In actuality, it's not the trash truck's fault, it's the city of Bullies' fault, twenty-five, thirty-five, forty years ago, because they didn't use number one roadways. It's our own fault, we're just, you know, we're eating up the problem now for what happened forty years ago.
That's part of it, but they are using larger, they are using larger trucks though now, as well.
They are, but we're, we're used, also using six inches of base and rolling, and-
For curbs?
No, the, the, you know, where the trash truck is going up, and you see the curbs all folded up into the yards, and they're having to replace those.
If you're just doing a job here and there all the time, those are separate projects.
No, those are ad hocks.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, I did not know, I mean, 'cause-
Totally separate, they don't combine into any kind, if you got a building there, and you're, you know, doing a little bit here, and a little bit here, and it's in the same location-
Different scene.
And continuously, then, yeah, you might be trying to-
I, I'll give you a prime example of probably what I would take for a bid, is we're, right now laying water lines on Tugus Street, and we tore the heck out of it, and we discovered since we're laying water lines, we're gonna have to- And we discovered since we're laying water lines, we're gonna have to also lay sewer lines, so we're just gonna go ahead and repair the sewer right there. That's gonna really mess up. So, Sony's gonna have to come in with, you know, a pretty good paving job. But most likely, there will be enough curbing gutter that we have to do that will require a bid, because you're talking about, I don't know, one quarter of a mile, but a long way, I mean, it's gonna be way up there. If, if it's less than fifty thousand, no problem, but, you know, I can get a pretty good cost estimate of what that is, and the curbing will be, and then we can figure out what we need to be, or whatever.
And clearly, that's one project.
One joint project.
Well, I'm just asking if that was one project, or if that was, if that's considered one, if curbing is considered one, but no, it's not, so as long as you're not doing it all in one place, is that what you're?
Well, well, I, I don't know that that's exactly the same. It's such a tedious, it depends on the specific facts of that situation.
I'd say it's a judgment call.
It is a judgment call, and there are parameters that, that the city works within, the staff works within, and the council works within. But I, I just, I cannot say in every situation, because that's just not how this works. I mean, I'm just, I just don't feel comfortable doing that, I'm not, I can't do it.
We want black and white trade.
I know, and it's not, and it's not, there's so much that's, that's not black and white. And it just does depend on the situation.
Get down to pothole and potholes, you know, if you didn't want here, and then one all over town, is that one big project, or?
One big pothole.
I guess it depends on how big the pothole is.
You've got some guns.
Any more discussion, can we move on to number three?
I will say, T M L's little book, or thing, that procurement laws made easy, that's a pretty good informative book, if any of y'all are interested in, in any of that.
Okay, so let's move to the community renovation.
Good evening, gentlemen, update, I had, I hired an architect, but I've called an architect here, and I looked at the background back there. We made sure about, we kinda gave him an idea of what we wanted to do. He asked about codes, you know, whether we need to strengthen the system, whether we did, whether we did that stuff, determined that we didn't, anyway, he's gonna come back with cost estimates of renovation, and a cost estimate for his services.
And this is coming out of what budget? So that budget that you have in yours wasn't used for next door?
Not that I know of.
And we used the money for next door from the bond?
Um, it's not actually the bond payment, that's just where that specific portion of money has always been set aside, and I think I had kinda gone over this previously.
But it still doesn't make quite sense to me.
And I understand that.
Where, where are the expenses for the renovations to the customer service building booked?
They are in, right now, they're booked in the C I P for it. But they come out of the, it's under other financing sources under there. I think it is labeled bond proceeds, or something like that, but that's where it's at. That's where that money has always been set aside, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They've always set that money aside for moving forward with a new building, or, you know, whatever the case may be, a couple of years ago, whenever they started that. And so that's just where that money has kind of always been. So anytime we've bought property, or anything like that, that's kind of where that money has come from, because it's kind of been set aside there.
But we've only bought, I mean, I mean, you say anytime we've bought property, we've only bought?
So I think, I'm not for certain, but I think that the property on eleven twenty-five, maybe not this one, because this one was at three hundred thousand, but, but maybe that one. But that portion of money was always just kind of set aside and designated if we were able to find something, that that money would go towards, originally, it was a bond for the entire municipal complex that they were originally talking about.
So that was a hidden money?
Which was approved by a previous council.
Right.
Okay, here's, here's the problem I have with it. Never would you book an expense to bonds payable that wasn't a bonds payment. So when you talk about putting building renovations in an account that's labeled bonds, bond payments, that, that's just not right.
I, I understand that, I've talked to the auditor about that.
I mean, at some point, it's gonna have to be moved.
Correct, that's why it's in the C I P.
So, it's not, doesn't need to be put into that account, it needs to be put into a renovation account. Now, if we overspend our renovations, and we need to move part of that money into the other account so that we're not overspending, then that's what we do. But you would never book utilities expense to rent, it's, it's just not.
What, where are you going with this?
That's the problem I have with it. We've spent however much it was that we've spent on a community service building in renovations. We have sixty thousand budgeted in renovations, we've already spent that. The two hundred and fifty thousand that's in bond payments is really a slush fund, because there was no bond payment.
I, if you would like to look at it that way, I suppose.
So, I mean, do we, if we need to do an amended budget to correct it, because there was no bond, bond payment, and we need to reallocate that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, well then, let's just go ahead and do that.
I think that that's probably a, a move that our auditor needs to make, if we need to do that, or we don't. And I will admit, we're about it.
Well, the auditors wouldn't have anything to say about what we do with the budget.
I think the budget comes down to right here.
Well, we paid them.
And we didn't realize that that money.
We paid them the audit and all the advice.
Well, true that, but the council is the, I mean, we set the budget, and we didn't, I mean, I did not realize, and I don't think anyone realized, that that renovation, the renovation was sixty thousand dollars. That's what renovation said, sixty thousand, it didn't say, oh yeah, but there's two hundred and fifty thousand more sitting over here under a bond payment.
Well, if you want to talk about the bond payment thing, and where all that came from, it came from the previous administration, where they were saving up money.
Secretly.
Huh?
Secretly.
Yeah, to build a seven million dollar city home.
That was wrong, that it wasn't secret.
Right, it wasn't secret, but it was, yes.
We, we, we tried to avoid that, and that expense by putting it to good use. For instance, this and that building that are all booked by all in town, and whatnot. And, so, you know, basically, we're using good judgment.
Okay, but Tracy says we're off topic. We're talking community room renovations.
But aren't we supposed to, how are we gonna say we're gonna talk about that if we don't know where that money's coming from?
Well, what I hear them saying is that there is money there, we have a disagreement about whatever account, or how it's supposed to be allocated, or whatever, but in terms of the renovations, like I already said, he's, he's moving forward, trying to track down an architect, and get some sort of plan. If he comes to the council, and if, if the money is there to do what it is, and if it's not, it's not, that's kind of what I'm thinking. But really, at this point, it sounds like to me, looking into the renovations is moving forward. And, and if there's further discussion about making those renovations, or where the money's coming from for that, I think that's, I think that's meeting where that information's brought to you.
So this is gonna come to the council, right? Before the, before anything's done for the renovation of the community room, it is coming before the council, true?
Yeah. What are the general ideas or general plans you have today of how this is gonna be cut up, split, and divided?
You'll come out, I'll show it to you.
Okay.
This room is trying to stay the way it is.
I'm sorry.
This room is trying to stay the way it is.
Isn't that, isn't it true that the mayor, the?
The mayor, the city manager, the city secretary, the judge, the court enforcement, and a conference room.
The judge is coming up here now, the judge is not staying?
No, she wants to come up here too, and then, and there's a plausible reason for that. One being, there's a few of us now at the office, and less have been on pool down there. But they need to cover one though. Sandy.
I've had no problem with that, I just said, I thought she was saying.
We've got a little problem in it, like, if somebody comes down, and you get here, or whatever, and we're talking about something, so I'm gone, and table leaves, and stuff, and we might leave Sandy there by ourselves, or the judge by ourselves. It's like today, I was there for about forty-five minutes by myself. Of course, so, but we, so we put us down on the front door that said that we may be closed between twelve and one, and today was one of those days where we closed, so. But, they can always make payments up here.
There's a, there's a tentative drawing for all those office spaces.
And I can tell you that the police department is mounting their watering, trying to wash the rest of the room in our building, they are scratched up.
Once again, this is coming to the city council, I mean, this is coming to us before you move the money, but.
Why would I need to tell you twice?
Well, I'm just saying, there's lots of things that need to be discussed, that sometimes don't always get told correctly.
I mean, I'm not opposed to us doing it, doing it, I mean, at all, I mean, if that's the better thing, then then let's do it. I just want it to be done the right way, and if we need to move the money for the budget, and get it all in the right spot, then great, let's just go ahead and do it. Let's not wait till the end of the year, and amend it then, and have these overages, and it's, it's kind of put in the cart before the horse, you know, we're just gonna go ahead and do it, and then we'll worry about how it works out later. We need to go ahead and get it worked out, and then do what we're gonna do.
Okay, well, if there's no other discussion on the community renovations, then we'll move over to the city council rules and procedures. This is Tracy's favorite topic.
I have several questions on this one.
I'm sorry?
I said, I have several questions on this one.
Let's go forward then.
Uh, number one is, we've got like, I believe it's almost two important pages of city council rules and procedures that are laid out for us. And I couldn't find anywhere in there that says, this is the procedure that happens when you want to get an agenda item on the agenda. Now, I know by the grace of, you know, the way we've always done things, if it's less to be put on the agenda, then it gets put on the agenda, if not, then it's not. And I think personally, Stockup came up with a pretty good agenda, it's way too long, we need to be cut down, but we need to take that as a model, and model some of that, and trim it back, and fit it to our needs. But I think that there's two councillors here that are representing one third of the city, and they bring an issue forward that it needs to go on the agenda, it needs to go on the agenda.
Okay, I'm gonna respond to that, and then what Tracy was going to, because I was educated by Tracy on this item. The agendas come with actionable items. Tracy, take it from there.
Okay, so, the, the city, the city council plays certain roles, they set policy, they control money, clearly they're an employer of, of certain folks that work directly for the council. There, there are some things that aren't necessarily an actionable item, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That need to go into the workshop and be discussed over there.
Potentially, or they just need to go up the chain of command, you need to talk to the city manager.
Hold on, but if it goes up the chain of command, now you're got a corner, you've got a walking corner going.
Your city manager, your, your operational chief of the city.
But he's not making the decision of how the city operates, the council is.
But there are certain things within those parameters, once you all have set the policy, and once you all have approved the budget, he's, he's in charge of the folks that work for the city, except for the judge, and me, and Sandy, and him.
How do we get to the procedure, how do we get to the policy, if we're not allowed to discuss among each other? If, if I, if we've had an issue, it comes from the, from the city senate, they have a concern, I can't go talk to my other council members about that, because it's a forum.
Not, but what I'm saying to you is, it may be a situation where that something needs to be addressed to, to staff. And it may be that there is a policy, or whatever the situation is, that, that that's something within his purview, and not necessarily in any of council's purview. If it has to do with staff, you know, or something like that. Now, if it truly is a policy issue, an act of law, a permanent budget, you know, any number of things that have to be approved and brought before the council, but not literally every single item is an agenda item. I, I, I mean, it's just, it's just not, and so, I'm, I'm gonna say, you gotta start somewhere, and it's gotta be, it's gotta be with the operations guy, and that's, that's the city manager. Now, at some point, if it truly is a policy matter, then that's something to be, that's something to be discussed.
And how do we discuss that if it's not on the agenda, legally?
If you have, if you have a couple of folks and say, hey, this is our concern, then I'm thinking if you take it to the mayor, who decides the agenda, she's the presiding officer, and then we kind of work through where we are in the process. Is, is, is there an issue that has to be addressed, that has to be addressed by the council, for instance? Let's, let's go back to this cash handling policy. That, the date on that was two thousand and twelve, I'm assuming it was approved by the council in two thousand and twelve, but it hasn't been brought up to date since. Okay, here, here we are, that's a policy that's gonna be presented by finance, considered by this council, and adopted or not. I believe that that's actually, is every single thing, and how that is directed from the city manager to finance, to finances and facilities, what we should be talking about sitting here, no. But ultimately, it does all come back to a policy presented, a policy accepted, and this is what we're expecting.
But that's a six or seven year timeframe of getting it correct.
I understand, and, and, and that's what Carrie said, I mean, that's what Carrie said, but that's the thing, there are some things that we do every, every year, that investment policy, or something like that. And if that is something that would be helpful to the council, to be looking at that policy, there's a lot of things that we, that we.
But just because we've always done it the way we've always done it, if it's not, you know, if it's not in the policy and procedure, then we're, we're relying upon the grace of others to put it out there for us to have a discussion. Otherwise, it's illegal for us to talk about it.
Well, okay.
And that's my problem.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm just gonna say to you, that if two of you all come to the city manager, and you say, this is our issue, what's the situation on this, and he says, this is how we handle that, or let me look into that, or whatever it is, and there needs to be a policy adopted, that's a different situation. If we have something actionable by the council, I am telling you, that every day, the new ship of operating the city, where are we buying the stuff that goes in the potholes?
I'm not necessarily talking about that.
But I'm just saying to you, it, it just, it's a, it's a case by case basis, and, and I can't change it, you know, every, every item that comes and is presented as we want this on the agenda, should be on the agenda. There's some things that need to be in a workshop, new council needs to understand, this is how things work. This is, this is how we've always done it, and listen, I'm not a proponent of that, but I mean, I'm just telling you, especially in small cities, that, that is, that's what we know, that's what we used to, but it may not be working now. But again, I think it's a chain of command, I think you gotta start, I think you gotta start with your city manager. You know, you know, on, on the budget, approving the budget, and all those kind of things, that, that specifically within, that specifically within you guys' power, and that's your obligation. But then, once you've enacted that policy, and have it ready in place. But then, once you've enacted that policy, you have that ready to place, it, it's your staff. It's your staff that's moving forward with all that.
So to clarify another point, if we have an issue on any of these agi, agenda items that we've talked about, he, he told me to come to his office to look at the clients, for instance. Now, that, that's on an agenda item that we've talked about. And I go to his office and he shows me the agenda, and then someone else comes in, is that creating a walking forum at some point? If I talk to him about the finance of it or something else?
I can brief two of you, it's like...
I know. If you brief two of us, and then an hour later, you brief two more, is that a walking forum?
Yeah, it's, it's not a walking forum, it's a forum, and that's what they should run one of the others.
So...
In that way.
So in other words, only three of us at any point in time between meetings can come talk to you about any issue?
He's asking, how in the world do we get something on the agenda?
How do we get a conversation? How do we get a conversation about agenda potential, agenda items, potential issues? Whether it's the dogs running loose that we've had a lot of complaints about or other items, the streets or whatever, that we can sit down and have a conversation about?
Reason that you want to talk about the dogs running loose in the council meeting.
I'm just bringing that up as an example.
Well, I'm, I'm, and I'm asking you because that's really not an actual little item. It's up to me to direct the police department, Willie, to go out there and look for the dogs and stop them and kill them if we have to, or whatever we gotta do.
Oh, no.
But what I'm saying is, if they're attacking people, you know, or something like that, that's, that's staff.
Right, okay, bad example.
And, and if you, well, okay, let's have it over.
Electric rates, let's bring up electric rates. Let's just go there.
In the past...
How are we gonna have a discussion about electric rates if we can't talk about electric rates?
In the past, there's been, if two councils says there wants to be something on the agenda, it was put on the agenda, okay?
But it's not the policy.
But it's not working now. That's what is good now. We're just putting it all the way around.
Let me speak from personal experience. It was very frustrating and aggravating to me because I could press the thing...